We'll get our meeting started. And it's nice to see such a lovely crowd, given that it's beautiful outside and summer vacation has begun. So with that, we are going to get started with roll call. Go ahead, Mike.
We do have a quorum, even though Pam and Lynn are both absent this evening.
Great, thank you very much. Next, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. If you please rise. Mike is going to lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have consent. Do we have a motion to approve consent?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have a special announcement by Dr. Wall.
Very proud to be standing in front of you today to talk about a process that took place for the Carmel High School principal search. As we know, John Williams retired after 14 years, serving the Carmel High School's community, students, parents, and staff. That process started with stakeholder meetings, meeting with parents, meeting with students at the high school, and the staff. The purpose of the stakeholder meetings was to develop a leadership profile that represented the parents, students, and staff, their belief, their feel, for what the characteristics and the leadership qualities the next principal of Carmel High School should have in order to be successful leading the Greyhounds. So at that time, we developed this profile, and as I discussed with the board, this was a very specific targeted search for those candidates that matched the profile developed by those stakeholders. It was an internal, we looked at internal candidates and external candidates that matched that profile. And it was very exciting for me to see one candidate continue to gain momentum throughout the process. That candidate has been working with Carmel Clay Schools for 14 years. I'd like to invite Dr. Tom Harmus to the podium for a moment, please. Dr. Harmus has been the principal of Creekside Middle School. He opened Creekside Middle School in 2004. Prior to that, he taught social studies, history, and worked as an assistant principal at Tipton and Avon High Schools. During Tom's tenure at Creekside, Creekside earned the National Blue Ribbon School Award, became state trained as a best practice site for students with autism. He will join the Carmel High School staff commencing as principal July 1. It's very exciting to have someone of your own that is capable and not only in passion for Carmel High School, but for the Carmel Clay community. We are very proud to introduce Dr. Tom Harmus as the next principal of Carmel High School.
Just a few thank yous. First of all, to the school board and Dr. Wall for this opportunity. And a huge thank you to the students, staff, and parents of Creekside Middle School, without whom this would never have occurred. You know, for 14 years, we've been serving the students, staff, and parents on the west side of Carmel. And I am so very excited to serve all of the Carmel Clay School stakeholders and look forward to becoming part of the high school. I do appreciate and recognize the leadership and the legacy left behind by John Williams, principals like Bill Duke and Dale Graham, and I hope to continue their legacy of excellence. I know that I walk in to an excellent school with outstanding students and staff and outstanding and unbelievable parent support. I'm very excited about becoming part of the Greyhound family. I can't tell you how excited I am. It is my turn now to listen, to engage, and to learn everything I can about Carmel High School and about the culture that is Carmel High School. And I look forward to that journey. So thank you so very, very much.
We have another very exciting announcement this evening. As we had Kim Barrett, who was principal of Smokey Row, retire this past year after serving not only Smokey Row, but Carmel Elementary during her time with Carmel Clay Schools. Same process, we engaged stakeholders in developing a leadership profile that represented what they thought the best qualities would be in a principal for them to be successful at Smokey Row Elementary. We talked to the staff as well and got their feedback and developed a profile that we thought would be the most successful candidate to fit those qualities. And in this instance, it was really clear from the beginning. Tom picked up tremendous momentum and finished strong, and we're so happy for Tom and Dr. Harmus leading the high school. But the profile that was developed at Smokey Row was very clear that Lila J. was the strong and best candidate to lead Smokey Row into the future. I'd like to invite Lila up to the podium, please. Just a couple of qualities that stood out that made it apparent that we had a very strong principal with talents and gifts that Smokey Row developed in their profile. Student-centered, visionary, visible, and a humble leader. Those are just some of the qualities that were developed by the stakeholders, and I'm very proud to introduce Mrs. Lila J. as the next principal of Smokey Row Elementary.
Thank you so much for this really incredible opportunity to serve at the elementary level as the next principal at Smokey Row. I really consider it the greatest compliment to look at that leadership profile and feel that you felt I was a match to all of those incredible characteristics. It's very humbling. As an elementary education major, I always thought that I would work with young kids. And when I landed my first job at the middle school here in Carmel Clay Schools, I just fell in love with it and have spent the last 15 years working with young adolescents. But with that being said, I have had a continued desire to work at the elementary level. And I do believe my next steps professionally are to deepen my leadership skill set by working with them. I am honored to continue to be able to do that here in Carmel Clay Schools and at such an awesome school. Having worked with Smokey Row Elementary for the past seven years with transitions and things, I have gotten to know the school community very well and am truly honored to get to be a part of that. I have worked with Kim Barrett, who's just been a wonderful teammate, and I do have so much respect for what she's done at that school. And I just look forward to getting to be there after her. I do want to acknowledge the students and families and staff at Carmel Middle School. It has been an incredible journey there. And I am leaving, I feel, a better person, colleague, leader than when I started, and I truly appreciate them. So I can't wait to get started on this new adventure, and I'm really looking forward to getting to meet our students and staff. So go Rockets!
And just for the board's edification and our families from Creekside and Carmel Middle, we will commence the search for the next principal of Creekside Middle School and Carmel Middle School immediately. Tomorrow, leadership profile feedback forms will be sent out to all parents and all staff as we develop the profiles for Creekside and for Carmel Middle respectively, and those two searches begin immediately. I just want to say to the board, it's really exciting to have plans of succession that represent our own talent and gifts. With Tom and Lila showing their ability and their success at their current positions, to now take those gifts and talents to another building is very exciting for me as a school administrator and for you as a board, because what that does is energizes, I believe, our staff and our other administrators to see that there are goals that they can have, goals that they can attain, and they can share their talents with the other building. So it's really an exciting day for Carmel Clay Schools, for the leadership team, and for the board you representing the community. Congratulations, Lila and Tom. We look forward to great years ahead. Thank you.
Well, both Lila and Tom, on behalf of the board, congratulations. We are very excited that you are continuing your journey in Carmel Clay Schools, and I know you will serve our families very well. And I hope you have a great summer as you transition, because we're looking forward to having you in the fall, ready to roll. So, thank you. And with that, we will move to action. Our first action item is non-bargaining group salaries. Into that, we look to Dr. Wall.
I'm going to pass that off to Roger and give an overview, but this is consistent with what the board has done the four years I've been here, to take the opportunity in June to represent the non-bargaining groups and to look at them and suggest salary and benefit package that is representative of the money we get from the state and the hard work that our staff does on a daily basis. This is a two-year action item, as the biennium was passed by our legislators. And so, without further ado, Roger, would you just review the highlights of this, please?
Yes, as Dr. Wall has stated, this is where our proposing salary adjustments for the next two years, which coincides with the two-year state biennium funding. So we know what our formula is for the next two years. And we are recommending salary adjustments for administrators, department chairs, student service coordinators, occupational therapists and physical therapists, and nurses. A 2.5% increase each year to their respective salary schedules plus increment, and a 0.75% of salary stipend for all those employees that are rated as effective or highly effective. With regard to our support staff, the recommendation is a 2.5% increase each year to all their salary schedules plus increment.
Thank you, Roger. Make it a motion on the table to approve action.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Well then, all those who approve to the salary adjustments for administrators, department chairs, student service coordinators, our OTPT, our nurses, as well as our support staff, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Dr. Dudley, who's going to approach us with the fun workshop topic.
Yes, yes, thank you. So tonight's workshop topic will illustrate our journey this year, this past year, as we built capacity for leadership in the digital world to amplify student learning. So the board will have the opportunity to engage in a breakout EDU game and learn more about our technology integration and our leadership initiatives. So this evening, leading our workshop, we have Dr. Martha McFarland, we have Mrs. Anne Arroyo, and we have Mrs. Kristy Cloud that will be leading that. So I invite us, do you want us to go down to the tables?
Yes, please.
So go on down.
You may have to later on.
Colleen, could you project for us, please? Thanks. It's exciting to think that exactly, I looked back at my notes, exactly one year ago tomorrow, I was standing here sharing with you the recommendations from our tech integration committee with a few of our teachers. It's amazing to me, I was thinking back, was that just a year ago this summer? But we've come quite a long way in our technology integration journey, from deploying 1,000 devices for our teachers to 4,500 devices for our students across our 15 buildings, to adopting Canvas as a K-12 LMS, and lots of other things happening in between all of that. We've come quite a long way. Tonight, we really want to focus on one area of that technology integration plan, which is our professional development, which is really the linchpin to everything that we're doing with all the amazing devices that we got. That's just one little piece of the puzzle, but our professional development is really the piece that makes all of it happen and all of it happen meaningfully. So tonight, we really want to focus on our initiative this year, which was called Amplify CCS. And we're going to start with, Dr. McFarland's going to share a little bit about our leadership journey.
So as Anne mentioned, this is all about leadership. We realized this was way too big for this to be a small professional development module or maybe a top-down session for teachers or administrators to support technology integration. This needed to be boots-on-the-ground, face-to-face, leadership, teacher-to-teacher, administrator-to-administrator, teacher-to-administrator, students as leaders. We all needed to play a role in this. And so we issued a call to leadership. And what you're seeing on the screen right now is exactly what our teachers saw in their Canvas course for Amplify CCS. And I'll just draw your attention to some of the last statements up here. So what beliefs set the direction of your sails? What convictions help you navigate the winds of change? Clearly, teacher leaders have a huge role to play in our schools, and we are all about building that leadership capacity and supporting it and believing in the power of teachers as leaders within our district. So here's how it rolled out. At the elementary level, we organized our teams into feeder-school cohorts. So those included the principal and/or the assistant principal in each school for those feeder-school cohorts, and those are feeder schools to the three middle schools. So three or four elementary schools grouped together. And then we had our lead teachers, our tech coordinators, and our instructional coaches as part of that. So those made up our elementary cohorts. And then at the middle school, we elected to go with content-based cohorts. So rather than work based on a school, school to school to school, what we did was look across all three schools, and we organized based around the idea of concept of humanities, leadership, and STEAM leadership. So we had our humanities principal, or AP and DCs come. We had tech leaders in the building, so teachers who had already stepped out and were playing a leadership role, or maybe showed an intense interest in technology integration. We had our tech coordinators, our media specialists, and our instructional coaches attend. And so we had those two big cohorts that represented the middle school. And then at the high school, we also worked on content-based cohorts. So we had humanities and we had STEAM. But rather than pull groups out and have them meet here at ESC, we embedded ourselves at the high school to work within their schedule. So we had our assistant principals and our DCs for the various departments, depending on humanities or STEAM focus. And then we had members of their professional development committee, their tech coordinators, and their instructional coaches as well. So we had groups of teachers and administrators coming together in leadership cohorts K through 12, and we worked on the same content, but applicable to their various levels, to the content in which they taught. So we tried very hard to make it very relevant to them, to their level, and to their assignment. So the first semester, we worked on building leadership capacity, and we worked on developing common understandings, common vocabulary. There were certain concepts that we really wanted to work on, so that K through 12, every educator in our district who was in a leadership role, and again, that's teachers, administrators, DCs, media specialists, coaches, and the like, we all had the same background information for building this capacity together. So we worked very hard on that first semester across all of our levels and cohorts, and then second semester, we took time for implementation, reflection, and planning. So our goal tonight for you is to have you participate in a breakout EDU session, and we'll talk about that just a little bit more, to explore key concepts that we talked about and worked on within our cohorts K through 12 for our Amplify CCS Technology Integration Leadership Initiative. And here are the things we'll be working on tonight or talking about. The law of amplification, onboarding and troubleshooting to promote independence, the SAMR model for tech integration, Canvas implementation, and the tech adoption cycle. Now, we put together a really meaningful PowerPoint presentation for you that had lots and lots of information, and we were going to stand up here and talk to you about that. And then we realized that that probably wouldn't be very meaningful or engaging. So we decided to do a breakout EDU. And you'll notice that, or you may have heard, in our schools, lots of teachers, media specialists, administrators have been using breakout EDU protocols in their classrooms to engage students. And here are some of the benefits. First of all, the breakout EDU platform or games transfer ownership of learning to the participants, which is what we really love. They require critical thinking, collaboration, creativity, and communication, which I know as a board and administrator group, you are all very good at that. And finally, those breakout EDU games provide you with many opportunities to fail forward and to develop grit. And if you've studied the growth mindset, you know that's all about failing forward, that failure is an expected part of learning and growing, and developing grit is what we need. So we will do tonight's breakout session in five facilitated challenges for you to give you a flavor of this. And remember those concepts. Each one of those sessions will be about one of those concepts that we worked on this year in our Amplify CCS initiative. Now, when we're finished, you will be saying, "Ha, we broke out," or maybe "we almost broke out," or "we might have an epic fail on our hands." Even if we have an epic fail, it's okay. But I can tell you, with the people here in the room, you will not have an epic fail. So we're ready for our first challenge. And here is your clue. Our adventure started with a not uncommon action for teacher leaders to build school capacity by reading books to amplify teaching and learning. Use the clue and what you see on the table to solve the first riddle. or anyone who watches the presentation afterwards. So looking at all the books, we're able to find a key. And the key was found in a book called Geek Heresy. And Geek Heresy was written by a professor called Kentaro Toyama, and he is known for developing what he called the law of amplification. And that's where the title of our initiative came from, Amplify CCS. The idea behind the law of amplification is that where you have in education really good pedagogy and practice in place, technology will amplify that and make it even better. But where you don't already have great pedagogy and practice in place, layering technology on top of that could have the opposite effect. In Carmel Clay Schools, we really truly believe that we have wonderful practices, pedagogy, really strong, wonderful things occurring. We want to use technology to amplify that to the good. But we didn't want to layer technology into our present scheme where things are going well. We can always grow, of course, but where we really believe we have an excellent school system and have the opposite effect. So that was the whole concept behind our Amplify CCS initiative and the law of amplification. Okay, so we're ready for challenge number two.
All right, so great work. Inside your first kit, you were able to discover both a jump drive and a DVD box drive. So now, in your minutes, you're going to go about finding all the controls.
You're going to need them both together. We'll give you that hint.
We'll give you that hint.
So, paper.
It's gonna be a combination of these blocks.
Okay, it's a number one.
Okay, so... Okay, seven, twenty-one, five.
So, some of them are letters and some of them are numbers. Wait, 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 wait. So, no, there's three. So, the one that's got three, we only need numbers for. What one's three? Three, three, nineteen? No, what's CCS? Three, three... No, what's one with...
That's four.
That's not it. But we've got two that are...
So, that must be Wi-Fi. A four one.
The three one, well, we have a three one.
We've got five. Two, one, two, three, four. Here's five. One, two, three, four, five. They're both five.
There's three, two fives and one three. But the three can only be one through...
Nine.
Nine.
And there's one with just numbers and letters.
Yeah, just numbers. One with just numbers and the rest is...
Letters and symbols.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've got two at five. Yeah, so three, three, one, nine. Are there any blocks over there, digits?
No.
A five and three. Well, we've got a five. Two, three, nine, six, nine.
No, we don't, we need just letters.
Okay.
Oh, oh, wait. Number, alpha, oh. So... So, CCS, so S would be one.
S is one, so three, three, one.
Okay, W would be five. Five.
Well, then, I want you to be three, three, one.
Twenty-one would be three. What should they be?
I want you to be three, three, one. It's probably this way. This should be three, three, one.
How long have they been classed to do this?
They have been a bit old timer.
I've got four.
We'll try it the other way. Try one of the...
Does it say which side? Because sometimes it's... One, two, three, four, five. We've got a five. Okay, but these are numbers, letters.
Ones, letters, and ones...
Okay, we're gonna keep you moving there on that four-digit code because you've got the...
Do we need a hint?
You don't need a hint yet. You've got the correct... You've got the correct number there when you got your five. Somebody told me that you came up with your four-digit number. Why, five, one, two? You know, you have a four-digit code that you came up with.
Oh, yes, well, we have five, nine, six, nine.
Five, nine, six, nine, that's correct. So, by watching your video, you guys were able to determine the code, the four-digit code that resembles Wi-Fi. This helped you identify what the teachers and students learned this year about troubleshooting and onboarding, one of the tasks that they went through. So, this is an actual product that the students made, a video about Wi-Fi with some of our technology coaches to help them and teachers understand the different networks that exist throughout the district. They went through a process of evaluating what pain points they had in the classrooms, technical issues, safety issues, how to manage the devices in classrooms, and then they created products to help them improve that process. These are two examples from Creekside and Smoky Row where the tech teams went back to the building and put together some additional information, one example using habits of mind and another using a flashlight model to help the students stay on task with their technology. So, now, you're gonna get to use your other clue in your box.
Every day, teachers are designing activities to target higher-order thinking skills in order to engage students in rich learning experiences. But integrating technology adds a whole new layer to teaching and learning. How can technology transform your learning design? Dr. Ruben Quentadori developed the SAMR model as a way for teachers to evaluate how they are incorporating technology into their instructional practice. You can use SAMR to reflect upon how you're integrating technology into your classroom. Is it an act of substitution, augmentation, modification, or redefinition? Dr. Quentadori likens his model to moving up a ladder. The model includes a dotted line that represents the threshold where you shift from using technology to enhance learning to using it to transform learning. Transforming learning promotes higher-order thinking skills such as analyzing, evaluating, and creating, which are essential to Common Course State Standards and 21st Century Learning. So, how can you teach above the line? Let's take a look at an example of a classroom task and how it evolves through the lens of SAMR. In substitution, technology acts as a direct tool substitute with no real functional change to the task. For example, take creative writing. What if you had students write a story using a word processing program? In this case, students are substituting a handwritten story for a typed story. The task is the same with no real change in student engagement. In augmentation, technology still substitutes, but with some functional improvement. What if you took the same creative writing assignment and had students use a word processing program? They could use features such as spell check and tools for formatting. Again, the story-writing task is the same, but the technology augments it with enhanced productivity. In modification, technology should allow for significant task redesign. Take the same creative writing assignment and have students use Google Docs to write their stories. Students can then share these stories with peers and provide real-time feedback. Here, technology has significantly modified the original task by introducing the benefits of student collaboration. At the top stage, redefinition, technology allows for the creation of entirely new tasks that were previously inconceivable. What if students transformed their written stories into multimedia productions after creating storyboards? Students filmed scenes, edited clips, and added music. They could publish the videos and receive feedback from voices across the globe. In this case, technology redefines the story-writing task to include media creation, critical thinking, collaboration, and communication. So, how can you use SAMR to reflect upon transforming your learning design? Quentadori offers reflection questions to help improve up the SAMR ladder and shape how we're designing learning experiences. For instance, ask yourself...
Oh, we have the SAMR model, and then we have... Four different stages. Students write an essay around a theme, essays then narrated and captured as vocal recordings. Use a verbal form to deliver and complete the quiz. Distribute the quiz in a word processor file format. You have students following answers on a computer. Students are asked to create a documentary answering central questions.
Much backwards, this one is...
Okay, we're working the word here, people. S, T, A, R, star. That makes a word, right? All right, that makes a word, but not the word we want.
What's the letter?
Well, that's got an exclamation point, right?
Yes. Pass.
So, you just explored the SAMR model, and as you just saw, this is one way we help teachers frame how they use technology in their classroom. We don't expect SAMR to be a continuum where substitution is bad and redefinition is good. It's all about going in and out, kind of like the swimming pool. Sometimes you're going to do a redefinition, and sometimes you're going to do substitution, and that's okay. But we want teachers always to be evaluated, when are they using technology? How are they using it to help make the learning better? SAMR helps give that framework for us. Breakout, Uncompensate Your SAMR Task. We're gonna do the envelope folder now that you accomplished that gap. All right, you can examine some of our Canvas data and the implementation of Canvas that we've had to date.
Thirteen, thirteen forty-seven.
Wait, which one? Which one I mean?
Saint Denver's thirteen forty-seven.
Oh, August, September.
Great, so you actually have to make that to buy it. You think you can find it in that spot?
Eight, three, seven, eight. Eight thirty-seven.
I used pre-interpretation, right? I think it's like we have pages. This is our login page. Yeah, so this is pages right here, like, sign up eighty-six. What's eight thirty-seven plus eighty-six? Mine is something.
Eight seventy-three.
Eight seventy-three?
Oh, this one's eight seventy-three.
That's eight seventy-three? This one's not a rate. This one here is next from X or Y. So, I'm assuming this is our number here. Probably eight fifty-four, or this one here. Nine fifty-nine. Eight fifty what? Eight fifty-four. I hope there's like a cupcake in there. Better than Jeff.
Okay, for the last challenge, just for the sake of time, we're just gonna walk you through this basically, and then we're gonna give you the key to the middle of the cover. But what we did with teachers is we borrowed from the work of not the fly wall. With not the fly wall, there are something called a tipping point. And what comes about is when tech adoption cycle, within the tipping point, you have early adopters and then you have people who are not early adopters, I say earlier. And so, there are five different stages that we might be along with continuing early to build a proper action. So, your earliest adopters are running the tail, and those who are slower adopters are in the middle of the tail. And so, based on where anyone is within that adoption cycle, we want to help people cross the chasm. And this is the chasm right here. And so, we recognize that our teachers and administrators at any point in time could be anywhere on that cycle. And what we want to do is always be growing. And so, it's not that we're good or bad, it's just that we want to be growing. We want to go forward, and that can lead to technology innovation. And so, what we did was create a rule, but then we helped our teachers as leaders in their new... and their new students as leaders know how they're gonna help teachers if they make that movement from the mainstream market to the early market. And so, within that rubric, we looked at how to differentiate professional development, we looked at how to mitigate challenges, and then how to use the power of group norms to help move people forward. And so, what we would have had to do, if we had more time, was to look around the rubric, because always within, right, that we will be there, if things close to the back of them. You'll notice, yes, thank you. Eric, let's see the... Right here, and you'll see the cell frame underneath there. And then up here in front, we have the different pieces that are going that we look for. And you would plug those pieces onto that rubric. Once you did that, you would find arrows, so the arrows will point directionally, and then we'll give you the code you need. So unlock the... So we are going to give you an official of that code. So you can go ahead, pass the code, and unlock.
Okay, so Eric, just to do it, and that'll be your... I'll just be for it since I'm in the lot. Oh, yeah, I have to use the flashlight twice for this one. Well, that's how our kids are so much harder. This is where you start the last thing?
This is where you...
So, Mrs. Arroyo, while we're waiting to get our prizes, would you like to view our final video?
Yes.
Did you get it?
Yeah.
All right, we'll get it.
So as we finish wrapping up that lock, we wanted to share with you a little bit about, the locks are a little finicky sometimes, so... Sometimes the teachers don't break out, that's okay. So, we do have a little short video. You guys did great. We have a little video that just shows one of the things that we had teachers do. Lots of grit. I'm gonna need a little grit to get that lock myself. To help teachers really have a place to document what they're doing so they continue to learn from each other, on our Twitter feed, we had teachers tag anything they did with meaningful tech integration using the hashtag #AmplifyCCS. So we put together a little montage of the many tweets that we had throughout the year, which I think gives a nice snapshot, K through 12, of what tech integration looks like in our district. So I think that really encapsulates how the culture of tech integration has really changed through this initiative this year. It's pretty exciting to see all the things from kindergarten all the way through high school and how they're using technology. Had we gotten, our locks worked, we're gonna maybe have to get lock cutters tonight. What you would have found in there, and I don't think I have it here, is a quote that we use often with our teachers. Brian Ellis, "Your and it loves tech, it's not magical, you are." And so, to celebrate, thank you, at the end of the year, we've had a very cheesy gift for them, which was also to break that lock. But we had some extra, they'll be lovely magic ones. They're very exciting, because not only is it not magical...
Yay!
And if you're already in the club, these ones are also Slack fans for all of you magic ones.
I told you, you like them.
Yes.
You'll save my lock. Tech is not magical, you are. And that's how we feel about our teachers. It's really about our teachers and kind of working in the practice, not just about... So, thank you for bearing with us in our exciting game tonight. Getting the lock open is the first part. Appreciate that. I think, you got any questions?
Yeah.
Thank you. I think it was one of our more exciting, enjoyable, collaborative meetings that we've had in quite some time. And we love my little fifties, these are pretty awesome. I do have a couple of questions. First, more along the lines of what we're doing this summer with professional development with C4. Will we have different classes on how to utilize or further, well, I guess utilize some of the technology we currently have? Are there gonna be some classes on better implementation of Canvas for some of our teachers who are a little slower, they're on the other end of our tipping point? What type of programming are we going to have for professional development?
We have a lot of presenters. I think, last count, I wanna say we had seventy-nine presenters presenting sessions, some together and some individually. But we have, it runs the gamut. We have things about breakout, we have a lot of Canvas sessions. Some will be run by our own teachers and on varying different, using different techniques and strategies within Canvas. And then we also have, this is an instance where we do bring people that we partner with, such as the Canvas and Structure Company, will come and also be providing sessions. So we'll have a beginning, intermediate, and also for people who wanna know what all the new tips and tricks that, you know, an average user may not know. So we'll have Canvas there. We'll have some people from Apple, because we have iPads, doing some special work with iPads. We'll have, we have something specifically, I think, about the HP360 Flips. It really, and a lot of it's how it integrates into the classroom too, is what teachers are bringing to us. So, we have quite a few sessions. They run the gamut from anybody who's an early adopter and really still pretty new with tech to somebody who's really tech savvy and excited about learning the best new thing.
Great. Do we have boxes in every school? Are these things that they check out from here? How?
We don't have, I don't know if we have boxes in every school, but we did actually raffle some off, was part of our C4 raffle last year. One of our tech integration specialists, Kate Masterson, she has one. I personally have one as well. That one is the one that you're using. And so, I lend mine out to people, as does Kate. Many of our PTOs and principals purchased them after our C4 conference last year because we did offer quite a few sessions on breakout. It's a great little community that you can find online with tons of games. It's all on, once you have the box, you can make as many games as you like, but there's also games that are already created to go with subject areas as well. There's a whole bank of games that you can allocate, you can find and locate.
Great, thank you. Do others have some questions?
Remind us, when is C4?
C4 is July 12th, starting at eight-thirty this year, going to three-thirty. Have an exciting day planned. We're still working on it. Very excited.
Well, I think that wraps up any of our questions. Is there anything else you'd like to share with us? This was really exciting.
I think we're good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That was our last topic to discuss this evening. Do you have any reports or anything you'd like to share, fellow board members? Dr. Wall, do you have anything else you'd like to share this evening? Well, fantastic. Well, thank you, everybody, for a really great meeting. May you enjoy it.